I'd like to call the October meeting of the Southern Planning Commission through order, and we'll call on Commissioner Creekmore for the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you to ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We ask that you will be in our midst and for your blessings to help us engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to continue to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace to make appropriate decisions that will affect our city. Help us to be able to review the matters at hand in a reasonable and thoughtful way. Let us continue to give our thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us and guide each one of us so that we can make fruitful contributions as we work for the city to accomplish our goals this day. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Sir. Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwan.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Goodman.
Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Vice Chairman Staler.
Here.
And Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wyman. Do we have any corrections of the minutes from the September meeting? If there's no corrections, we will stand as presented. We have one item on our agenda today that is not a public hearing, is a family transfer, and the family transfer subdivision plat request, FTR 2024-001. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, family transfer subdivision plat request, FTR 2024-001, submitted by William Clark Savage, the applicant, on behalf of William C. Savage Declaration of Trust dated February 8, 1988. The property owner requesting a family subdivision pursuant to Section 31514 of the Unified Development Ordinance to approve a family subdivision plat to create one new parcel on property located at 2633 Joshua Lane Tax Map 24 Parcel 56. The affected area or property is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the rural agricultural use district. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution approving a family subdivision on property located at 2633 Joshua Lane, zoning map 24 Parcel 56. Account number 252320025, FTR 2024-001. Matthew Madariaga will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a request to create one new parcel by family subdivision for the applicant's daughter. This request was submitted subsequent to the recent ordinance text amendment to update the regulations for family subdivisions within the Unified Development Ordinance to include family trusts. Therefore, the request was reviewed under the new regulations outlined in staff's report. The subject parcel depicted above is owned by the William C. Savage Declaration of Trust dated February 8, 1988, and is located off of Joshua Lane. The property is 116.88 acres in size, from which William C. Savage, the trustee of the trust, proposes to subdivide a 1.073-acre parcel to his daughter, Billie Jean Ferguson. Under the new family subdivision regulations, there is no minimum ownership holding period for a trust before a family subdivision can take place. Billie Jean Ferguson has not previously received a family transfer parcel, therefore this request fulfills both those requirements. The lot dimensions and building setback lines for the proposed new lots are consistent with the agricultural zoning district and have adequate area for a separate dwelling and drain field. The new parcel fronts on a 50-foot ingress and egress easement to be established by this plat. The proposed easement extends to Joshua Lane. A deed of gift for the grantees has been prepared in conjunction with this plat, which prohibits the transfer of the property within 15 years of its receipt, and a sworn affidavit was signed acknowledging that the purpose of this family transfer is to provide separate places of residence for the grantees and to keep the family state within the immediate family. A 15-year holding period is required after a family subdivision for a parcel that's held in trust. In summary, staff finds that this request meets the criteria for a family subdivision, and the proposed parcel meets all zoning requirements as set forth in the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the applicant's family transfer subdivision request, FTR 2024-001. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments in reference to this family transfer?
Of course, I'm in favor of this because it's my daughter, and I think we've met all the requirements, and I want to thank y'all for what y'all have done in the past, and I hope that y'all will pass this today, and we appreciate it if you do. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, will you just give us your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. When you get old, you can't remember what you're supposed to do. William Savage, 2413 Joshua Lane, Suffolk, Virginia.
Thank you, Mrs. Savage. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make any comments about this family transfer? Here or none. Commissioners, comments, questions, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion for the approval of FTR 2024-001.
Second.
Second? Take or pick. The ladies got it.
Add it if you want.
Okay. Any discussion in the motion? Here or none. Can we do this with a voice vote?
No.
We'll vote. We'll make life easy for you since you got it set up.
Mr. Chairman, the vote is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Savage, you have this approval for this, and there be no further action need be done, and congratulations.
Thank you. Okay.
This afternoon, we have one public hearing. The public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item of the item today is conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-006 SCARP Solar. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-006 SCARP Solar, submitted by Eric Alves de Sa on behalf of SCARP Solar LLC, Agent on behalf of Next Amp Solar LLC, applicant on behalf of SWB Associates LLC, W. Michael Lane Douglas Davis and Barbara S. Davis, property owners, in accordance with Sections 31306, 31406, and 31724 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility at properties located at 1380, 1390, 1398, and 1400 White Marsh Road. Zoning maps 35, parcels 172, 172A, 172B, and zoning map 45 Parcel 49D. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as being outside of the central growth area, rural agricultural use district. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2024-006. Making his Planning Commission debut today, Staff Planner Gonzalo Borg.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. This conditional use permit request before you today is to establish a solar energy facilities use on White Marsh Road, which is located outside of the central growth area, rural agricultural use district. The subject's properties are Zone A agricultural and totals approximately 137 acres and consists primarily of cleared vacant land and forested areas. To the north, we have vacant land and residential dwellings, Zone A agricultural, and RR, rural residential. To the south, RR residential dwellings and the dismal swamp, Zone A. To the east is the dismal swamp, Zone C, conservation. To the west is residential dwellings, Zone A, and White Marsh Road. The applicant is requesting to establish a solar energy facilities use encompassing approximately 14 acres of fenced area and 10 acres of solar array area on the White Marsh Road. This facility would be a 3 megawatts facility. The facility will be designed and operated to prevent the direction of concentrated solar radiation, or glare, onto the neighboring properties, as well as public roads or other areas accessible to the public. The project has been designed to meet the required minimum setbacks from the adjacent public roads and residential uses by employing a 153-feet setback from White Marsh Road at its closest point and 100-feet setback from the adjoining residential uses. The boundary of the development area will be fenced and will be marked with appropriate The applicant provided visuals of the proposed landscaping and screening showing the facility's appearance post-development relative to existing conditions from the public right-of-way. The images here on screen demonstrate the approximate visual impact of the facility from the vantage point of neighboring properties and roads. Limited three clearing is proposed, and where existing vegetation is not adequate, a landscape screening buffer will be installed. The haul route here on screen for construction and decommissioning of the solar facility is restricted to the ingress egress of the site and going southbound on White Marsh Road to Babtown Road. The haul route is proposed condition of the use if approved. It is staff's opinion that the site in question is appropriate for the proposed use, given the location outside of the central growth area of the Comprehensive Plan. With conditions, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit request, CUP This concludes my presentation. I will stand for any questions after the public hearing. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalo. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Tyler Rosé. I'm a local land use attorney with the law firm Williams Mullen, here today on behalf of the applicant. I'd like to thank staff for the comprehensive presentation and for the recommendation of approval. The applicant has reviewed the conditions and finds them acceptable. As you may recall, we were here last in July, and at that time, there were some specific questions regarding the applicant's community engagement efforts. Since that time, the applicant has taken those to heart and has engaged in extensive community outreach efforts. The applicant has had individual meetings with the adjacent property owners, and those meetings have been great with no opposition. It's met with community leaders regarding the general benefits of the project, and it has engaged with the public generally, particularly at community events such as the Peanut Fest this last weekend, and there were a lot of great questions and information provided at that time. Next Amp has also engaged with local community organizations such as Smart Growth Suffolk to ensure that its engagement is reaching the proper stakeholders and local constituencies in a targeted way and addressing those specific concerns and identifying those so we can properly address those going forward. Next Amp will also continue to engage with the community before construction as it signs up subscribers for the project, so this will be an ongoing effort to educate and provide information regarding the project as well. So as noted in the staff report, the project is well-sighted and complies with the city's UDO and the Comprehensive Plan. The project is located outside of the growth area as shown in the Comprehensive Plan and the newly adopted or proposed Comprehensive Plan. The project will have a relatively small footprint of only 14 acres and 10 acres under panel, so it will allow for it to be adequately screened. We'll have enhanced landscaping and also agricultural fencing along White Marsh Road to minimize any visual impacts. It will be adequately set back from the road to minimize visual impacts and is also naturally shielded on both sides with dense forest area. Importantly and furthermore, this is not a utility-scale solar project like those you may have seen before. It is a much smaller footprint. It is a smaller project. It's only 3 megawatts, where some of those projects can get into the hundreds of megawatts, so it will have a much smaller impact in terms of footprint and also visual impacts as well. As a community-scale solar facility, it will also be part of the Dominion Energy Shared Solar Program that will have a direct benefit to Dominion ratepayers. The applicant's representative will speak more on the general benefits of community solar and Next Amp's subscription model, but as a community-scale solar project, it has the capacity to generate low-cost, emissions-free electricity to benefit up to approximately 500 low-to-moderate-income households, specifically in the city of Suffolk. There will be a targeted effort to enroll and subscribe Suffolk constituents and citizens so that they get the immediate benefit from those cost savings. Whereas large utility-scale solar projects require connections to large transmission lines and added infrastructural construction that goes along with that, community solar projects can connect to smaller local distribution lines to minimize the impact, and any of those onsite lines will be underground as well. This will allow also ratepayers to purchase electricity directly from the project at a low cost instead of the electricity going directly onto the grid. So in conclusion, this is a well-sighted project that complies with the UDO and the Comprehensive Plan. City has designated this as a sufficient use for this district with conditions. We accept the conditions that have been placed on the project, and we believe we comply with all of the requirements of the UDO as well from a land use analysis. Therefore, we would respectfully request the commission's recommendation of approval at this time, and I'll turn it over to Eric Alves de Sa with Next Amp, and I'll stand by for any additional questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Alves de Sa. I'm based out of Next Amp's Washington DC office, and I'm the development manager for the SCARP Solar project. Appreciate the time to introduce Next Amp and what sets us apart from much of the solar industry and how we're committed to benefiting the city of Suffolk. As Tyler mentioned, in Virginia, the concept of community solar is referred to as shared solar, and it's considered shared because the electricity stays within Dominion, Virginia's electricity grid. And shared solar keeps that electricity in-state and is mandated by Virginia law to provide electricity bill savings to Virginia households. On the contrary, a project like the Myrtle Solar Facility out on 460 when you're heading towards Windsor, that's a project that's owned by Dominion and provides its power to T-Mobile. Our proposed project, SCARP Solar, located south from here on White Marsh Road, is 1/10 of the panel acreage of that Myrtle project. Our 10 acres of solar panels will generate enough clean electricity for the equivalent of about 500 homes, and that electricity will flow into Dominion's local power grid to the benefit of the homes and the small businesses here. Next Amp, we operate around 400 facilities around the country. For the last three years running, we've been the number-one community solar provider in the nation, and our community solar model, we really want to put community into that, community solar. So with each new solar farm, we subscribe utility customers to be participants of that solar project, and those who participate can benefit from 10% to 15% off their electricity savings on a monthly basis. These participants, for the case of this project, can be anyone in the Dominion territory, whether you're a renter, or a homeowner, or a small business, and per state requirements, some of that percentage, about a third, need to qualify as LMI, Low to Moderate Income. But where Next Amp is uniquely capable of ensuring that that up to 15% savings actually stays right here in Suffolk. Next Amp's here for the long term. We're the developer, the builder, the owner, and the operator, and over our 15-plus years working in community solar around the country, we have built out the expertise that I think is actually equally as important to you to hear, that we handle the backend customer subscription part of the process. So for those 500 or so homes equivalent of the electricity that we're going to be generating, we can commit that those 500 homes will be here in the Suffolk city limits, whereas other developers, they might be the owner-operator, they might not be the owner-operator, they might get it permitted and then sell it to somebody who's going to own and operate, but even if they are, they might not be involved in the customer acquisition and customer subscription part of the full solar value chain like we are. So I can stand before you today and speak to a little bit about that early enrollment and community engagement process that we go by for any one of our projects in any one of the states that we work in. For this one specifically, that actually, Boots on the Ground got started last Saturday at the Peanut Festival. Myself and our community engagement team and local partners here in Suffolk had a table. We were handing out information about the subscription process, and we were taking down names and numbers from folks here, constituents, who are interested in being a part of community solar in terms of and how that can save on their electricity bills. We were out here for a few hours. It was a really great event. You can see I still got a little bit of suntan on my face, and we got more than a couple dozen names that we're going to, that'll be the first tranche of folks that we call in about a year's time when we're really truly kicking off the customer subscription process. We're blessed to be working alongside Smart Growth Suffolk, a local nonprofit, on a community action plan to get the word out about SCARP Solar, about Next Amp, and about community solar more generally and its benefits. Given the location of the project on White Marsh Road, that outreach is ongoing in Cypress and Whaleyville boroughs with community leaders to set up a public information session. At the start, these efforts will involve Skeeter Town, Lake Kennedy, East Suffolk Gardens, Walnut Hill, and Cypress Farm areas, before expanding further to the rest of the city limits. Our objective through the community engagement is, again, to inform and educate and share knowledge about community solar and the fact that what comes with it, Next Amp, who we are, how we develop projects, understanding that although solar is a very low-impact development, it certainly has some impact in the host community. This isn't 100% completely out of sight and out of mind, but because we want to be good stewards of the land, good stewards of the community, and good partners with the city, we also want to make sure that those benefits are channeled and held and kept here in Suffolk. So we've got, again, a plan in place over the next couple of months to, with what has started over the last couple of months since we were here in July, to be able to get out in the community, get the word out, do it right, not do it rushed, and build a sustained presence for Next Amp in Suffolk beyond just the project itself, but involvement with the communities that are going to be in the area of the solar project. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff. That concludes the time for the proponents. Are there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Mr. Alves and your attorney, do you have any additional comments you would like to make?
Afternoon. My name is Doug Davis. I'm one of the property owners. I live in Sarah Court in Virginia Beach. When we, for the last couple of years, we were contacted by numerous folks hoping to build solar on this property. Apparently, it's a very attractive place for solar. After some time, we talked with many people, talked with Next Amp, and we decided to go with them. They have been very cooperative, very good to work with. We worked hard to maximize the amount of agricultural land that will remain and by moving the panels here and there. There has been some discussion in the past about heavy metals, and I have information on that. If anybody would like to hear more about it, I could do it now, or I could do it if asked.
You can leave it in the basket there.
I'm sorry.
You can leave it in the basket next to you there.
Okay. Well, I don't have it written down.
Okay.
Well, I'll just say that, that from the beginning, when so many people contacted us, the first, my first thought was, what will be the impact on the land? So I knew about that and I thought, this is important. I need to research it. I researched it thoroughly and I am convinced that there will be no impact. Our, my, both my business partner and I, the greatest, one of the greatest benefits of this is that this land will be open space in 25 and 30 years. Open space is good. We like that. And it will remain in agriculture, at least part of it. That's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there any more comments? If not, this public hearing is closed. Commissioners, questions, comments or motion?
I had a question for the city planner. The planner? Could I ask him a question? Okay. My question is more about the advertising, the notice timeline. So if I'm understanding correctly, the reason it's back is that the timeline needs to be that the first notice is no greater than 20 days prior to the public hearing and the second notice needs to be no less than seven days prior to the hearing. So the corrected notices, as I read in the packet, were the new, the corrected ones were done August 1st and then the second one on August 11th. With today being October 15th, that doesn't seem to fit that timeline. Am I misunderstanding that?
Those are, we give the applicant in advance the copy of the report and we did that as well there, but those were the previous dates when we had prepared staff reports for you all. The newspaper and the legal ad obligations that we have as the city is what come in, came into issue then. Previously, it was, as you stated, I believe, no greater than 20 days, I think, and then no less than seven. The way they are now is they have to be advertised two successive weeks, no less than seven days in advance. So the issue that we got into upon the original scheduling of this back at your July meeting was that second ad was six days prior due to our advertising schedule that we had with the Suffolk News Herald at that time.
The reason I was asking is because I was looking back at the minutes from July and we had four neighbors, four different neighbors and a farmer that came to speak in opposition, which was a fairly decent turnout. But today, we have no one, so I didn't know if that was an indicator of folks not knowing it was coming back before us.
I can't speak to, you know, whether they utilize the Virginian pilot for legal ads or not. I think we found it much more effective for the community knowing that the sign is out on the property. That's generally when we start getting calls and that's not been removed. So, so yeah.
It didn't, I mean, it doesn't change my kind of initial thoughts, but I just wanted to clarify that timeline. Thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I had some problems with this when it came before us the first time. And I'm not sure that, I've heard a whole lot of change. It does sound like they made an effort to get out the community and check this out. Still not sure how the process works. But one of the other concerns was that this property is right across the street from a potential project, a fairly large neighborhood, 300 and some homes. And just wonder if this is the proper placement for a solar farm that's going to have, I think it's 335, I may be wrong with that, but 335 homes, that'll be right across the street from a solar farm. And we have had some difficulty with the landscaping agreements on solar farms, not that this group would do that, but just have some concerns about the location being right there adjacent to what potentially is a fairly large residential neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, there was a, in the public comments in our packet, there was a note that Nick Creasy, who is not here today, wrote in and he lives across the street from one of our prior approved solar farms, right up the road from White Marsh Road. And his complaint is that they basically, after it was installed and all of that and working, that it did not conform to the conditions that the companies, that we approved. We approved it based on the conditions of that particular thing. It's not, not one of your companies. And basically having to do with the screening, it looks very nice that we just saw what it's going to look like in five years with the, thank you, with the screening of these, of these solar panels, which I think is the main thing. But again, I would, you know, my concern is the same concerns I think that we had originally about, about this in the beginning. And it would appear that in, in the other, you know, we have to base it on, on things that we have approved and the ones that are operating now. And there are some, a few, that are not abiding by the conditions of which we had, they were presented to us originally. My question is, what is the city's responsibility of making, of make sure, to make sure that those conditions are abided by? I don't know. Kevin?
So there are a couple layers to that, but as, as it relates to the conditions that are recommended by staff and/or ultimately accepted as a part of the ordinance at the city council level, we, we do actively inspect and, you know, patrol the city to ensure conditions are being met. Certainly, we find in most cases if conditions are not being met, it'll come to our attention and we can properly handle that generally through a notice of zoning violation. Should they not comply with a zoning violation, city council does reserve the right to revoke a conditional use permit should there be noncompliance with the conditions contained within. So that's a pretty good incentive to meet those minimum conditions. As it relates to things or conditions or regulations that aren't contained within those conditions, but they're regulated by the Unified Development Ordinance, pretty similar process without that large elephant of we, city council may potentially revoke it, but it is a zoning violation. And they are compelled to rectify that in accordance with our Unified Development Ordinance. It's important to note that with the, the majority of solar facilities that have been constructed in the city up to this point have been constructed under a previous set of regulations, particularly when it comes to landscaping. Since the original adoption of regulations that allowed for a solar facility's use back in 2015, we've modified that section of code twice to enhance the screening requirements and landscape requirements for these. So they're much better today than they were, at least when you originally started seeing these back in 2017. But we, we as a department and a city remain pretty proactive in enforcing these regulations. And we, you know, work with the developers once, once they install and make sure that landscaping's installed and taken care of. We do require bonding on landscaping. It, for the, for these facilities, that we see pretty massive landscape bonds that we hold at the time of site plan approval for at least a year to ensure that the landscaping is thriving after that one year. So, so that's kind of how our process works. Really, we're working with our inspectors and making sure we're routinely going out and looking at these sites.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have two questions. Anyone can ask it, I mean, answer. If, how much more solar farm, I know we have a percentage, how much more of a percentage do we have going forward?
At this point, we have roughly 75% of our overall acreage not accounted for in that cap, which we tied to agricultural zoning in the city at 1%.
Second question. During the comments, the statement was made that this is a community scale while the other ones are more larger scale. Do we have other examples of community scale in the city or this is one of the first ones?
The one that I recall that has not yet been developed but has been approved was the one at Salinas on Willroy Road. That was a community scale project. At this point, I believe they are approaching some of their site plan, but we've not yet received that. So that's obviously not been developed, but that was the one that I do recall that was a community scale project.
So if I'm understanding correctly, so a lot of the fear factors is based off of farms on a different scale than what we're talking about right here?
I think that's fair to say. Yeah, so the first three solar facilities that were approved and developed within the city of Suffolk were large, as in 120 acres plus, delivering 15 to 20 megawatts of energy. This one, I believe, is the three megawatts on about 14 acres. So the examples, particularly the visible examples we have in the city, are larger.
Thank you.
We got to do something.
So, Mr. Chairman, well, I mean, we, it's up for a vote. Mr. Chairman, I really deliberated about this for a long time. Everybody knew where I stand, stood on the last time it came. I rode out to the site and I looked at the road. I take Mr. Steller's word real strong about the 300 homes that are coming across the street. That's, that's, that's not a small thing. But I do appreciate the fact that there was community engagement and that they took the time to knock on the doors and put yourself in the room and you're making a long-term commitment. So for those reasons and also because I have become, I mean, I went to the retreat in Williamsburg and I think there's a future in solar and I think we need to be a part of it. So, Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of CUP 2024 dash 006 with conditions.
Second that.
Second, Commissioner Higgs. Got a second. Any discussion of motion? Just call for a vote, please.
Sir. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of four to three.
Congratulations. This will go to city council on November 20th with a recommendation for approval from this body. Okay, that ends the public hearings for today. Do we have any old business, Mr. Warren?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any new business, status report?
Yeah, status report of city council's meeting on September 18th. There were two ordinance text amendments that were presented for their consideration. The one, as it related to our dimensional and density regulations within the Village Center zoning districts, that was approved by city council at that meeting. If you recall, that text amendment essentially takes non-residential and residential uses within the Village Center District and differentiates things like front setbacks and things of that nature. The second one, the live entertainment ordinance text amendment in which we defined what live entertainment is and modified where in the city it would be permitted. And we further identified hours of operation in which it would be appropriate to do it with, out the need for a conditional use permit. That would be 10:00 PM. If you want to do it after 10:00 PM, you would still require a conditional use permit. So both of those went before city council on September 18th and they were approved.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, and there were no preliminary plats. We're down to commissioners' comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to jump in early this time. Very brief, I'm a member of Hampton Roads Radio Control Club and after a year or so of hiatus, we are instituting our Toys for Tots Fun Fly this coming Saturday morning. The field is located out off of Pembroke Lane on part of Lone Star Lakes, which is a city park. We hope to have a good turnout. If you're interested in seeing some remote-controlled aircraft fly, hopefully safely, and there will be some food available and a good show. Weather permitting, our Suffolk will be literally dropping in. And I know that the kids and all that come out, it's open to the public and we'd love to have everybody come out. If you're not flying, there's no cost to you unless you want to participate in some of the activities, make a donation for some food, whatever. But it's a good time out in, hopefully in the sunshine. And if you get a chance, come out, we'd love to have you.
Anyone else on this side of the room?
I'd, the only comment I would like to make is last weekend was the Peanut Fest. And I guess because of the weather, it was thousands of people that participated in that, if you could get to it and if you could get away from it, because the, the road going in on 1332 was, it was jam-packed. I wonder about the people that were trying to get down to North Carolina, to Whaleyville that day, Saturday. But anyway, it was very well attended and very well organized and everything else. It was a great, great program.
I was just going to add that, yeah, Peanut Fest was a, like, huge turnout this year and I was so happy for the city because I know weather plays a massive part in the turnout. So I was just very happy. And also I wanted to, I'm not going to call it specific, but there's just overwhelming local and regional support from business owners, private organizations, individuals with all these various ways that they've been supporting the relief efforts after Hurricane Helene. So just pat on the back to everybody that's been coming together to try to make a difference from Suffolk. So it's good to see.
I'd like to congratulate the new planners. Did a fabulous job, especially your first time up, Mr. Gonzalo. Okay, congratulations and keep up the good work. If there's nothing else, we stand adjourned.